Hey, Dan.
One of my neighbors has a new horn instrument that they're blowing loudly, so.
Ah, little mood, little mood music in the background.
We'll see whether or not that gets through the mic.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, Nick.
And Nick.
And I'm here too.
Hi, Sally.
Yes. Sally, you're not at your usual desk.
No, because we set up two guest rooms in our house.
Oh.
And to make those guest rooms presentable, I removed from those two guest rooms all kinds of crap of life that belongs to me. And so I piled it in a great urgent um push into my office. And we just like half an hour ago got home from four days in New York City, and I haven't even opened the door to my home office because I know how I left it and it would upset me.
Well, let's hope that.
So I'm here.
Are you feeling, oh, well.
No, what?
You're you're being a gracious host. You must be feeling good about yourself.
Well, no, so we we set up two guest rooms because we had a house sitter, pet sitter coming to stay with us. It was a dear friend of mine from Maine, the one I was helping move last week. And the the Dennis, um, I moved a whole bunch of stuff out of the double bed guest room. And then I moved a whole bunch of stuff out of the single bed guest room. And then the bet between me and Dennis is which guest room would she choose?
Ah.
She chose the double. Well, it's actually a queen, which, you know, obviously she's as smart as she looks. She chose a queen size bed, so they.
There you go.
So, yes, it was it was very nice. And and this is Odin. This is our new dog.
Oh. What a cutie.
Oh, then. Um, so we're all here. Um, so we have a quorum. I think we're not missing anyone if I can count. My brain is moving slowly this evening. My apologies ahead of time. Um, so, um, Taylor, if you would push the record button, please.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Uh, welcome everyone to the September twenty sixth night twenty twenty three meeting of the Winchester Planning Board. Um, we are being recorded via Wind Cam and also via Zoom. And I don't think we have any guests here yet, but if they show up, um, please turn off your video and your audio if you do not wish to be recorded. We also have with us this evening, um, our town planner, Kyla Herman, um, recording secretary, Nancy Pocari, and town engineer, Matt Schuman. So why don't I start to the roll call to make this official? Um, Carrie Layton.
Present.
Uh, Nick Rosatos.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
And Echin Scott.
Present.
And this is I'm the of curious and I am also present. Um, at this point, why don't we turn it over to Taylor to lead us through, please?
Great, thank you. Uh, just so everyone knows, I think that there are at least two, maybe three other meetings happen happening in town simultaneously, I believe, select board. Um, and 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 a few more, so, um, just to make everyone aware of that. So we'll start off with, um, any meeting updates, uh, from 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 anyone? I don't have any my my myself.
Um, I think, Carrie, did you have something about the CPA meeting you went to last week?
Yeah, so the, um, we had our first organizational meeting for the Community Preservation Act. Uh, and we're preparing materials to present that to town meeting. Um, and we're going to use the the Natick information, the Natick plan. Um, we're a lot of prep, uh, presentation that they put together for their um, presentation of the act, um, as our template. And we've been, uh, put into subcommittees. So Taylor and I, along with Ken Pruitt, Anthea Brady, and Charlene Brand Band, um, will be making up the Historic Preservation Group. And so we start, we'll start tomorrow with our first meeting and I'll keep you posted, but it's a it's a big group. It's got a lot of energy and I I hope we get it done.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, anyone else have any updates?
Um, we had a housing production plan, uh, partnership, housing, housing partnership board meeting last week, and there were some updates on the Cross Street. Um, and it was more, uh, understanding of what happened at Cross Street and what got the developer to go back to their original plan. And it sounds like it was a lot of, um, um, strategic, um, meeting up with the developer and the lawyer, um, from especially John Servier and, um, Mike Betancourt, and able to come to an agreement. And now also the housing partnership had some demands or just some some asks of them. And I think that that moved the needle some so that that was a wonderful thing, um, that they went back to their original plan. Um, twenty Glenwood, um, I I don't know if you heard, but the twenty six hundred square foot lot that was supposed to be designated for, um, affordable housing, um, had an RFP this summer and only one, one um, response from the neighbor next door. And they, um, are purchasing it for about forty thousand dollars. Um, I mean, it was sort of disappointing from the board um, to hear that. Um, I think, uh, some of the people who were looking at it were thinking that they needed a little bit more from the town, um, in order to make the finances work. Um, and they needed to put two units in, including parking, and it was just kind of in the difficult, very difficult to do on a twenty six hundred square foot lot with a lot of asks, special permits and such. So that was disappointing. Um, and then, uh, I I was asked to go to, uh, this, um, attend uh, the Temple Shirkshirk Tofa, they had, they have a lot of congregants from Arlington and the Arlington is, um, having a special town meeting next month where the MBTA three A, um, for their their portion of it. And so that that's coming to ahead for them. And it was interesting to hear from them some of the the issues that are that that they're facing. And I think it would be really interesting to, um, talk about that when we when we get that. But it there were some of the similar issues. Excuse me?
No, I'm just looking forward to when we talk about the three A.
Right. But, um, it 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 was something to watch for sure. Their theirs is a very different situation than ours. Um, but it's nevertheless, a lot of the discussions are similar to what we what we're probably going to be expecting tax impact, schools, parking. Um, what is the density, you know, beyond what is accept acceptable or what what is what is good for for the town? And, um, so it's it's very interesting. And I encourage you guys to watch and and listen to some of the discussions.
Oh, and was that on YouTube, Echin?
Except what?
What what the discussion? Which discussion? The Arlington Town Meeting?
Arlington, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's really getting heated now.
Okay.
I I I just had a couple of things I've been thinking about, um, but they're mostly for the when we talk about three A, but I just wanted to just interject, um, my feelings and thought. I'm I'm just feeling a little nervous about how to make the changes to the maps. I'm not sure I could understand the models without assistance and worry we won't get them done in time. But, you know, we can, obviously, we can talk about that. And then another concern about the working groups, uh, is that the whole board should have access to the consultants. Um, and I don't know if we could, we may not be able to do it with it during our evening board meetings, but maybe the maybe the the board members can be invited to the working meetings when the consultants are there. But that's something that we we should be can and should discuss that we we don't necessarily want to have the consultant's advice filtered through just a few individuals.
So I appreciate that, Nick, but we will have, we have a whole session on three A this later this evening.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just wanted to kind of kind of stick those thoughts in the back of our minds.
And, uh, yeah, so I, okay. Yeah, um, I just, we're, we need to, I, oh, my only reason I'm saying this is we have six minutes to get through our minute meetings. Because we have our, um, we have our public hearing at seven thirty. Um, so can we, um, is sorry, brain slow. Uh, are there any comments or, um, amendments to the, um, public meeting? I'm sorry, the hearing minutes, meeting minutes of September twelfth? Um, Taylor, if you could bring that up, please.
Yeah, I do on, um, page four for the initial review of Forty Church Street, um, on the second bullet point. So page four, yep. So it says suggestion that, um, that this is considered substantial demolition as applicable to historical properties. I remember Nick asking him to reference, um, whatever it is that he's trying to reference. And I I don't want it to suggest that this, that that is actual here.
Where 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 is this? Oh, uh.
Um, for bullet point nine, um, when there is a suggestion that this is considered substantial demolition.
Oh, right. I I I wasn't able to locate a.
No, I just wanted, I would just want to put in a note that
Okay.
Nick was going to follow up on that reference.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, I agree, I suggest that state that it was Nick who made that suggestion. So that, because I know that I disagree with that suggestion. So.
I thought that's what it was, but I I I could be mistaken. It came up during, it came up during the Harvard Street building when we were talking about it, but I I couldn't find a, uh, I couldn't find a citation.
Right. So but for the sake of the notes, um, just to put down that Nick had suggested.
I'm.
He was going to look it up.
Personally, I'm fine with that. If anyone on the board has a concern with that amendment. Okay, if not, um, any other um, concerns or amendments?
I have none.
Okay, um, then, um, I would welcome a
I'll move.
My my brain is totally.
I I can make a motion, DM. I'll move that, um, to approve September twelfth, um, twenty twenty three meeting notes, um, with the amendments.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote then, please. Um, Echin.
Aye.
Uh, Sally.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Um, Carrie.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you all very much. I apologize, folks. I have a migraine and it just makes my brain turn into mush. So this evening I will mostly be handing things over to, um, Taylor to run the agenda. And if our co-chair steps in it when I appear to be flailing, I would appreciate that. Um, so at this point, we are going to move into our continued public hearing. And the gist of it is that, um, we have a interview with a prospective fifty three G design review consultant um, for the Waterfield lot. And I'm sorry, this is a continued hearing for Waterfield CBD number one eight, number eighteen. So, um, why don't we do a roll call vote to open up the hearing? Someone make a motion, please.
I move the meeting.
Go ahead. No, Nick, go ahead.
I move that we open up the meeting, uh, to have the continued hearing on Waterfield CBD.
And I believe Sally has seconded that.
I have a second, yes, correct.
Okay, so roll call vote, please, Nick.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Echin.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So, um, at this point, I'm just gonna move this over to Taylor. Taylor, if you'd like to discuss what we discussed, we had a discussion with Dennis last week. So if you want to bring us up to date. And Dennis is here somewhere. I think I saw him.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Dennis. Hello, Dennis.
Hey there.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Um, so, yes.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
And me too.
Um, so, uh, yeah, we 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 have Dennis Carlon here today, um, with us, who is the interested party in helping us with the design peer review for for the Waterfield project. Dennis, I'd like to open up the the discussion with the opportunity for you to introduce yourself to those who don't know you, a little bit about you and, uh, um, why you're interested in this project.
Well, thank you, Taylor. I'll start with the why first. Um, some of you might. Some of you might know that I worked on the downtown plan. Think over eight years, uh different facets, different portions of downtown. And uh like any of my projects, I feel a strong affinity. To what Winchester is and what it could be and you've. Been working as a group have been working on that as well. I've been away, I think, about two years, maybe it's less, I don't recall. Um and when this opportunity came about, of course, I was interested. Um I'm an architect urban designer. Uh I'm completing my fifth term as a city councillor in Cambridge. Uh in large part because. Um in Cambridge, nobody on the council knew much about planning or zoning. Certainly urban design, but I've decided I've come to that end. Uh I want to to own, as I mentioned to Diab and Taylor. At this point in my life, I only want to work on projects where I've worked on before. In that I know an area well. And I um have worked with people I've enjoyed, to be honest. Um so I actually did the initial study for this site. Um and the proposal's different, but it makes logical sense in many ways. And I believe I can enhance, with your help, I can enhance it. Um the way I work uh is I'd be working with you. And I'd report to you. Um I'm, I probably worked on fifty. Different design reviews, uh most of them I've done the master plan. Some of which I've done even the architecture, as it turns out. Um so it's a nice blend. And this is the scale of work I'd like to work at, more of a village. Setting. And uh so I'm excited to be here and I'll gladly answer any questions that you might have.
So it's exciting to have you, Dennis.
Thank you, Nick.
We we will open up, anyone from the board who wants to ask us any questions or wants to ask. Any questions about the 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 process, please do, it is, uh should also be noted that our other. Uh peer reviewers um have have started their work. Um and they are um in the process of completing it both for traffic and stormwater. I believe that's, yeah, tra- tra- traffic and stormwater. So anyone, if anyone has any questions, please speak up.
I have a question. Um so the what in reviewing notes from the last meeting, I noted that we were going to. Either provide to Dennis or Dennis was going to provide to us a scope of what his peer review. Look, what his peer review would cover and provide. And I wondered if we did that or he did that or where we're at with that.
We took a previous scope of of Dennis's, for Dennis has done work with with the town uh many times before. Uh suc- suc- successfully and we took a previous scope um and amended that to 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 this. To to this project.
Great.
But I am just to add, I I'm open to any further thoughts, it's a basic scope of design review. And um. I should add, when I spoke to Taylor and Diab. I mentioned that in all the design reviews and I never got to it on the. Main Street um. Or right next to Town Hall sites. Um is that there is still follow-up, minimal hours, but follow-up. At design development to make sure there's continuity. Uh construction documents. Just quickly to make sure that there are no new details that contradict what you've seen. And to make sure there's a test wall built of samples of the materials. If there's an unusual window detail, I, all this will be written out. Uh in fact, I think I did it for six fifty-four. And um the other uh project next to Town Hall. Um and that's really so there are no surprises and I can promise you. In some projects, there was surprises. Um not in Winchester, but in other towns, mainly Cambridge, I was a consultant. To Cambridge for thirty years. And I was the consultant to the planning board. In uh approximately twenty. Think it was twenty-three projects that were part of my East Cambridge Riverfront Plan, which all got built. About ninety-five percent as we planted and done did the urban design.
Diab, go ahead.
Uh um Dennis, I I'm. Very familiar with your work because I've been on the board when you've been working with the town on multiple projects, but. Could you explain to the rest of the board sort of? How this would work, what your approaches, what your interactions are with the, and also we have uh Sam Scopatini from the um Scopatonic, sorry. From the developer here, so could you kind of explain the process you go about in terms of interacting with the board and the developer? And um how that would proceed?
Yes, I think uh one of the keys in addition to reintroducing myself and. Proving myself to the planning board is to do the same with the development team. And I succeeded at that uh. In almost every project I've worked on, my goal is to make the best project we can make to meet. The board's needs as well as the developers' needs, there's a reality to this. Um I've done buildings, I've worked on two thousand units of housing in my lifetime. About five hundred of which were affordable, I might add, many were design award projects. Uh I know what goes into it, I know what's real and what's not real. Um I looked at the drawings that Taylor was uh uh great gracious in sending me. I think there are a lot of good things about the project, I have some questions and issues. That I would like to discuss with the board. Um but I suggested to Diab and Taylor that one of the first things. Is to go meet with the development team, developer. Ideally in Providence in the architect's office to get a sense. Of the kinds of people we're dealing with and other projects they've done. The research I've done on the architects. Um tells me we're lucky. That they're extremely competent and have a. Town design attitude. Uh to architecture, I suspect some of them are new urbanists. If you know that area of really traditional design fitting in. And quite frankly, I'm one of the earlier new urbanists from the nineties. And um registered as such. So you know, initially I feel good um. And there'll be some issues that the development team will not agree with. I'm not trying to say that they're going to agree with everything and we're gonna become brothers and sisters. There'll be some issues and we'll bring it to the board for sure. Um but I promise you, they'll all be reasonable and they will all make sense. I do have some questions about. The potential materials so close to some neighbors. Um the service alley. Behind the neighboring building. Uh the lower level, the parking level, finished materials, I'm not sure, so there are issues is what I'm getting at. But the basic concept is pretty solid, as I see it. And the fact that the town is getting sixty percent affordable. And the parking, I know how difficult it's it is to make parking work below grade. In an area once called Waterfield, um I was impressed with that and you should feel good about that. So I can be more specific in in an answer uh by answering any other questions about the process. But I'm familiar with this, I would say, in all honesty, most developers. Probably eighty-five percent were pleased with the end result. And I can tell you ninety-five percent of the architects were. Um and I'll be glad to tell you about the ones that were less so. Um. But the final product was very successful. In the one that was the most dominant, Lee. Contradictory and it was the uh. Cambridge Side Galleria that went through numerous designs and ended up doing what we asked them to do. And for at least twenty-five years, it was the most successful shopping complex in greater Boston. Not anymore, but uh shopping centers are no longer what they used to be. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you. Um any other questions or comments from the board?
So what what is the um, so uh Dennis, have you had a chance to put together a proposed fee? Are you working on that?
Um. What uh Diab and Taylor and I discussed that. Um. The fact is, I don't have control over how long this is going to be. That is the developer, the architect. And frankly, the board. So what I have done in the past and I propose to do now. Is to bill on an hourly basis. To report to you as often as I do a write-up and I'll come in anytime you want. Um I put a maximum of ten thousand dollars, which is what I've done in the past. In fact, I think eight fifty-one was more than that, I think that was thirteen thousand.
What's eight fifty?
Um I don't know what it's being called now, it's the Main Street.
I think it's actually the 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 Phil's Hardware, is that correct?
Thank you.
Four.
Oh, four, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, 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 yeah.
Been a few years, I got two of the digits correct, that's improved, that's good. So it it and if if ten, if if we only need eight thousand. I accept that, we move on and I do my report. Um final report for you to approve, hopefully. Um but if, once we get to ten thousand, I'll notify all parties and say, we have more work to do. Now, I know the goal is, I'm sorry if I'm talking too much, I know the goal is one month. I'm happy to make that work, but again. It all depends on the development team and the board. Um if we can do it and that, and me, all of us is what I'm getting at, not just me. Do I think that can happen? In a month? Yeah, I think it's possible, given the schematic plan that exists. There are many good things about it, some question marks, but many good things.
Oh, it sounds encouraging that someone's going to be looking after the details, which I think are going to be. Of paramount importance, I think, to the the outcome of this.
I I do think, as I said, each phase. Should require less time and a test wall will be very beneficial to everybody. And even the developer, architects, excuse me, and the board and neighbors. And sometimes you make a subtle change at that point. Or if two bricks, brick types or two colors are being considered, you do both in the test wall. So you can see the combinations and um. That has never failed in producing a better product. It's relatively cheap money for a better product.
Um so I I want to interact with one comment, does it make sense then in terms of? Looking at this is to think about how much would be required though. If ten thousand, let's say, is our cap, do you actually want to say, let's set aside like ten percent of that for the? Construction work for the for the consulting during construction?
Well, then I would, I would give you a larger sum then.
Okay, so.
No, I I honestly believe that. This could be, that's fifty. I forgot what we said, fifty-three hours or something.
Fifty-five point five.
So. It should be fine, but it should be um. The River Street project that I reviewed that Diab mentioned when I saw him and Taylor. Uh there was money left over in the ten thousand. And that was a much bigger project, this one's more complex. You know, with the unknown MBTA, you might know what the final product is there, I I don't. Um with neighbors, right?
And we don't know either.
The the MBTA, we can get to the drawings, those the 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 design is finalized, because. So we can catch those drawings.
That's encouraging, but even the neighbors, some neighbors that are only feet away. Um there are other issues here that necessarily weren't elsewhere.
Sally. Um so I guess one, one one, one thing I want to add is that. Um the planning board has advisory boards. Um and I'm thinking specifically of the uh Design Review Committee, the Historical Commission. And the Disability Access Commission and we um have preliminary. Reports from maybe one or two, I'm not sure, but there will eventually be um, you know, a somewhat of an official document provided. To us that um would also be provided to you to synthesize into. Your recommendations to the board and I want to make sure that their recommendations are. Um reviewed and considered duly, um all of it's based on, well, in the case of historical, it's based on. Um fitting into the historical character of the town of Winchester, as you know so well. From writing the regulations governing section seven point three. And from the point of view of design, again, it's it's how are we employing design elements? To achieve that historical continuity and from the point of view of disability access. It's making sure that the building is meeting the needs of that community of residents um at the highest level that. Not only that it's required to, but perhaps that it can, um depending on the money, I don't know. But so I just wanted to know that your process would include the review of those materials and synthesis as appropriate.
Uh yes, I assume there was something like that, but again, that's why I see it as an hourly basis. And if we do reach ten thousand, for whatever reason. Um I'll come back to you and we'll discuss if there's a further work to be done. Uh you know, I I'll be honest, the two initial studies we did for Winchester, we lost our shirt. One was the project that we're talking about today, the initial. Urban town design massing I did and and the other was Main Street. Um and that's why I'm doing it on an hourly. Um but I'm not he, I'm not gonna get rich, I don't do projects less than twenty-five thousand. I'm doing it because I want to reintroduce myself to the town. And because I love. What Winchester's becoming. And the better, the more interesting historic buildings are the best of Winchester. And I might add, I think the architects on this project. Facing on Waterfield Street um. Is quite reasonable and feels right, more so than some other buildings. Um are there some details that you might want to talk about and I might want to bring up? Yes, but. As a start, I've, you, um I almost said you wouldn't believe, but you probably would. Some projects start off in the absolute wrong direction. Completely wrong, like they didn't read guidelines. This team seems to have taken it to heart. This team seems to have taken it to heart. And to me, that's all positive. I didn't see any other submissions. I I don't even know if there were others, except an early one more than two years ago. And this is better.
Yeah, we can, we can show you the, somewhat where we have a recording of all all of the five original submissions. I think there were five or six. They varied dramatically and they were very different. They were all very different. So at this point, we've got about ten minutes left in our meeting today, and I wanted to have some time for public to open it up for public comment. I did want to ask, Sam, do you have any concerns as this this number around ten K as a ballpark figure? That seems about okay with you folks?
I I think that is probably in the ballpark of what we were expecting. You know, I think what we're expecting is that according to the fifty-three G regulations, we would be expected to put in a deposit. And then it sounds like Mr. Carlon would would draw that down on an hourly basis. So and then, and then, you know, if if it exceeds that, we would have to replenish the account.
Yeah, I think we'd, we'd all have a, we'd all bring together a discussion on that. So the, I think the at this point, I, if there are no other questions from the board, then I would, I would recommend that a motion be made to accept Mr. Carlon as our fifty-three G consultant for the Waterfold CBD number eighteen. And that's conditional upon the scope of work being agreed upon by Civicco Causeway. Thank you. I almost got your name wrong. And if there's such a motion.
I so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Any further discussion? If not, why don't we move to a vote? Nick?
I.
Yicheng?
Hi.
Sally?
I.
Carrie?
Hi.
And I'll say I as well. Thank you very much, Dennis. It's great to see you again. And we will get the scope of work and the estimate out to you, Sam, as soon as possible, so you can sign off on it or make any comments, so we can get this, the ball rolling on this quickly. Appreciate it all.
One, one quick question, the end of the month timetable would be a good. I I need, I need to know what that is, the, when the contract signed at the end of October, whatever it is. I don't, I don't know if that'll be in the contract, but I see the timetable.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the end of the, we were at the outset of this process. I know that Civicco Causeway was trying to get things to a really good spot by the middle of October in order to get to start the funding round applications. I'm not sure if that's really feasible because of where the other. I mean, we're not going to meet until, I believe, the, is it the tenth?
Right.
To discuss those. So I would say that you know, we have a meeting on the tenth. We have another meeting on the twenty-fourth. I presume we're going to be having short continuations of the hearing every time the board meets. So I would say maybe, you know, if you could meet with us in two weeks and then two weeks after that, if we would have. I I think that, I don't know how long this will take. I think we need to try to make progress, but nailing it down to a particular time, I think is I don't know that that's going to be feasible, or or it might make rush things more than they need to be.
Thank you for saying that.
I have no idea if that provides any, any, you know, enlightenment on your question.
Well, you can all think about it and then shock me when I meet with you. And Sam, please call me Dennis. Nobody calls me Mister.
Okay, I hear, I hear you, Dennis. And we look forward to working with you. I would, yeah, I would just, in terms of timing, I would just throw out there that, you know, we are, we're hoping for this to be a collaborative process and you know, if we can meet with you before you issue your initial report, we'd be happy to arrange a meeting with our, our design team to to help move things along. We, we are trying, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to rush the board at all, but to the extent that we can facilitate moving as quickly as possible, we're willing to do that.
That's, that's my goal. I understood that. And yes, I, I think we're going to meet a couple of times at least. And Taylor and I will be seeing you.
Good. Excellent.
Sally, go ahead. One quick comment on the, on the question of pace and timing. That I think that all of us have a commitment to move it along as expeditiously as possible while not compromising any design decisions. Because not only do we want it to come in as affordably as possible for the developer in a time of great cost uncertainty, but we also want it to come in as the most excellent project that it can be. And so no pressure on you, but just do a really good job and do it really fast. That's a joke, but but I I understand, and I think we all understand that it's a very important balance between the two.
Yes, and I agree with you. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. So we have just a few minutes for public comment. So if anyone would like to focus, comment on anything on the Waterfield project, please raise your hand. And we will acknowledge you.
I do also want to note while we, when we wait for anyone, we've perceived no public comment by email or by any mode of communication since the last, last meeting. Also, all comments from the Design Review Committee have been uploaded to the website.
Thank you. And following up on that, if you wish to send us your comments, you can also do, always do so at planningboard@winchester.us. And that email goes to every member of the board, as well as our town planner, Taylor Herman. So we will all see your comments. So if no one is here this evening, then what I suggest we do, oh, we have a comment from, I have a hand from John Serbeer, Chair of the Housing Partnership Board.
Yeah, I just want to say, make sure people understand Taylor's comment. Housing Partnership Board submitted written comments over the weekend. They, they went to Taylor, they went to all the planning board members, and I assume I'm not going to repeat those tonight or anytime, but we're prepared to answer questions. How does, I just want to go on the public record that, that the comments from our board had, were received during, since the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, John. I did say Designer Q. I meant Housing Partnership. It's my mistake.
Okay, so our next order of business here is to set a time certain to continue this hearing. And I would recommend that that be on at our next meeting on October the tenth. I believe that is two weeks since. And we can set it at the same time of seven thirty. Is that fine with everyone?
Yes.
I think it's good to have it early in the meeting.
Okay, so why don't, if there's a motion to continue this hearing until October tenth at seven thirty?
I still.
Have a second, please? Okay. Roll call vote. Nick?
I.
Carrie?
I.
Sally?
I.
Yicheng?
I.
I say I as well. And then let's, I believe that, that serves also to, to end this particular section, since we have moved to continue.
One, one comment, Diab?
Yes, go ahead.
I would hope on the tenth that I would have a preliminary report to share with the board and to receive your comments related to that. And getting back to Sam's need for urgency, I'm willing to start next week and meet with them, with Taylor, as seems fit. So it it will be a productive meeting, I hope, not just a report.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. So we look forward to that. And because we are amazingly actually on schedule this evening, we're going to jump right into our next section. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Sam. We're going to jump right into our discussion of the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission interview. And Taylor, do you want to take that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, we have Carrie Dawson here with us tonight, an interested party in joining the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission. I mess up saying that almost every time I try to. This is a, a position that the, the planning board is responsible for, for appointing. It is currently vacant. So Carrie, I'd like to give you the opportunity, the opportunity to introduce yourself. Let us know who you are, where you live, and why being a part of this board interests you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I see a few familiar faces. Carrie, I think our kids were at WCNS together. Nice to see you. So I live at thirty-eight Rangel Road, which, just as you curve around Rangel, where that lovely brick Victorian right at the elbow there. We bought the house from David and Maureen Faganbaum, who have been graciously passing all their deep knowledge of the architecture and the community on to us. So we're still learning in real time all about this amazing house and this beautiful district. I teach at the Boston Conservatory. I teach musical theater majors and opera singers. So I'm, I'm part-time there. I'm raising two kids, along with my husband and I are here with our two kids and our dog Archie. I have a seventh grader and a fifth grader at Ambrose. We're loving our new home. As I said, there's a steep learning curve, but we are really feeling incredibly grateful for this beautiful park-like setting and this beautiful old home. I grew up in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, where there is a special part of Chapel Hill, right along Franklin Street, that has a lovely historic section of homes. And that was always something that added to the community, to the to the campus. My dad was a professor there, so it was just embedded in the town, this sort of rich, cultural, beautiful architecture. Fast forward many years, Dave and I are in New York. We lived there for ten years. We're living in Brooklyn and just, I'd, I'd say that that's where my love of architecture and just beautiful old spaces and old homes and beautiful craftsmanship really sort of landed in me in a new way. And I think something is lost without these, these spaces and these neighborhoods that if we don't protect them and talk about them and honor them and allow that sort of visual, visual connection to our history and our culture be alive and well and thriving, we really lose an important piece of our, of our community. And it's sort of, you know, subtly at first, I didn't really appreciate it when I was so young in Chapel Hill, but now thinking back, like that was a meaningful part of my community and, and so I feel I'd say it's a growing passion to preserve this neighborhood and this district. So I would feel excited to learn and grow and move more into this space and into this volunteering role.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Carrie. Yeah, we're really excited to have you here tonight. I'd like to open up the opportunity for the board to ask any questions.
Board is usually full of questions and comments. I think you've wowed them.
I think so, yeah.
I'll start off.
The question that comes to mind, and and it could be just because I am, I have not availed myself of available information, is what are, what's, what's sort of the goals and work plan for the Rangel Road District in the year ahead? I, I, this perhaps a silly question. I honestly don't know. I'm just curious about what will you tackle or take on or, or address?
Yeah, I, I only know a little bit about Maureen, what she has talked about, and I know she was pretty active and extremely proficient in this realm, but I think when opportunities arise for, you know, it's it's adding on to homes, or if a developer is sniffing around and just preserving the integrity, the sort of aesthetic, aesthetics vibe and this, this park-like space and it's, it's my understanding to really maintain the integrity of this park-like feel. I correct Taylor in that assumption on my little knowledge thus far?
Yes, the Rangel Park doesn't have a, well, first, doesn't have a long history. It's relatively new. And their, their, their predominant role is to preserve, is to preserve their, their, their neighborhood, yes.
Yeah, I should say it's the Rangel Park Commission is relatively new. I think Rangel Park is.
Yes, Rangel Park itself is not, yeah, yeah.
So, so I have a question and I, I, it's probably not one you can answer, and I apologize straight on. So the Heritage Commission is sort of a volunteer buy-in effort. Are there any moves afoot to actually turn Rangel Park into a heritage district? Which would provide some much more substantial protections? Because again, heritage, the heritage, the heritage, I'm sorry. Yes, there's a difference between an LHD, which is a local heritage district, and what the Rangel Park Heritage District is, which is a volunteer opt-in group. So I'm wondering if there are any plans to turn that into a recognized historical district, which provides much greater protection for the buildings?
To, to, to my understanding, I don't think, I don't, Carrie, if, if you happen to know, speak up, but
I don't. I'm sorry to say. I wish I did.
The, 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 these are the types of questions that come up within this, 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 this commission. These are the choices that they will be responsible for, for, for making. Currently, they are meeting on a, I think, a bi-annual basis, I think twice a year. There's potential for them to meet monthly, quarterly. They're able to, to decide how, how frequently they, they want to meet. But they, they, they can, I'll actually share, actually, I'll share my screen again.
Yeah, I mean, Carrie, you probably don't know, we have no historic, no recognized historic districts in town. And so because the Rangel Park Heritage District was, when it was created by town meeting many years ago, or not so many years ago, as a town meeting member, it struck me that this was an opt-in sort of commission. And you have quite a number of people in the neighborhood who are part of this district. And so it seems that you might have the constituency to actually create a real historic district, which would provide more, more protection. So I always, I assume that this was step one in terms of going towards that goal. And I don't know if that has been part of the discussion. Cause I think that is certainly one part of town that could use that sort of production.
Yes. Yes, and it's interesting, you know, cause my house is in the preservation society, so we are limited in terms of some things that we can do to our house. So I wonder if this turns into a bigger sort of protected district. If people get a bit squeamish, thinking that they too might have some restrictions, but that also play in to what keeps it so beautiful? So threading that needle of protection and, um, boundaries, so to say, um, just, yeah, curious how to move into that, I think.
Yeah.
Just so that everyone at the board knows, I, I am the town hall staff member who sits on the, on the, the commission, so. I'm the, I, I organize meetings and, um, sit in with everything. So I'm, I, I will be able to let everyone know what, what's, what's going on.
Great, great, Taylor.
So this, this position is, um, so there are two types of positions on this commission. One is, uh, for people who are from the neighborhood and then there are two others who are, I believe, appointed by historical and design review who are not within the neighborhood. And, and Carrie, you are definitely one of the neighborhood representatives. Um, are there any other questions for Carrie or, um, is there a motion? To, um, appoint Carrie to the, what's, what's the length of the term? Is it three years? Make sure we get the motion right. Oh, good lord. Doesn't say how long the term is.
Eternal.
That's, that, that's kinda what, that's kinda what it makes it sound like.
Last chance to run egg.
Well, one question I have is where John Clemson has stepped down and he's no longer in town, if I'm not mistaken. Would, would Carrie Dawson be stepping into John Clemson's term that would expire in twenty twenty-five?
No, the, the, the only position that Carrie can step into is Sarah's, uh, cause that's the only one that the planning board has the responsibility to fill.
I see, okay.
So I'm, I'm gonna assume at this point, these are all three years, cause the one, two, and three were staggered just to get them all filled. That's a typical thing you do when you create a committee is you stagger the initial appointments. Um, so I'm gonna, so you don't have everyone leaving at the same time. So I'm gonna assume this is a three-year position, cause Sarah Holmes' term expires this year. So the motion would be to appoint Carrie Dawson as the planning boards. To appoint her by the planning board to the Rangel Park Heritage District Commission for a three-year term beginning, I guess, now. That would be the motion.
I think it's great.
I, I so moved.
Yeah.
There's our second.
I happily second.
Okay, great. So, um, let's do roll call vote. Yicheng.
Aye.
Sally.
With enthusiasm, aye.
Uh, Nick.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye, and best of luck.
And I say aye as well. Um, thank you so much for volunteering for this position. Um, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Carrie. I'll, I'll follow up with you in the next, uh, the next few days with some more details for you.
Perfect. All right. Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Bye-bye.
And we are continuing on our amazing, um, ability to stay on time this evening. Um, so next up, uh, we have a ZBA petition, um, number four double oh five for one forty-nine Highland Ave. And, um, Taylor, I'll let you take off on that one, please.
Okay, so, um, I don't, maybe we have a question here? I'm not sure. Um, yes, we do tonight. Um, okay, so I sent, um, planner notes, uh, late. Uh, we have planner notes as well as engineering notes for this. Um, if you haven't received them, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll go over them. So this is, this is for one four nine Highland Ave, ZBA permit four zero zero five. Uh, the petitioners are seeking a special permit. Um, their property is located RDB ten, the lot, uh, seven thousand four hundred and fifty-two square feet. Uh, they're proposing a, um, reconstruction of a roof above their garage, a new enclosed porch, and a proposed porch and stair in front of that, uh, that, that enclosed porch. A special, a special permit is required for this, uh, for this project. Um, because this is not, this is non-conforming and the work that is to be done is over these setbacks required for, for this lot. Um, all other requirements, uh, besides the, uh, the, uh, the work over the existing setbacks, excuse me, meet the, the required, uh, criteria. So if we look at the plans on page seventeen, the document. You can see here on the left-hand side of existing and left-hand side of the proposal. We have no, the, the, the building does not encroach any further on, on the setbacks. Um, everything, the, the dimensions remain the same. Uh, but because it encroaches over, because it already is over the setbacks, we would do need to, uh, it does require a special permit. Diob, I know that you had questions about that earlier. Does this make sense to you now?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't see your response. My, my, this was getting back to our favorite three, five, five in the zoning bylaw. And whether this would fall under the determination of the building commissioner that, that this did not increase the non-compliance of the lot. And since it isn't really increasing the non-compliance, because it's maintaining the seven, seven-point-nine foot, setback, which although it is not compliant, it's not making it any worse. My recollection was that in the past, this wouldn't have required a special permit because it didn't violate. It, it would have been deemed no more non-compliant. Um, but I don't, uh, again, I don't know if this is the new building commissioner taking another tack or that's just, and it could be my poor recollection.
So I, I remember in the, the, the whole analysis of three-point-five-point-five of the zoning code that we went through, that there is a provision that if a non-conformity, a new non-conformity, um, is along the same line that an existing non-conformity is on, that it falls within the, um, parameters of, of special permit award. Um, and I just was jumping into the zoning code three-point-five-point-five to look at that and didn't have enough time to skim it quickly. But I, is that not part of the code?
There, it doesn't, it's, it's been, that's an interpretation.
Yeah.
And, and so it's not actually written in the code, uh, an extension of an existing non-conformant setback is not a new non-conformity, I believe it's called. So I, I just, my brain is not working. So my recollection may be faulty. If this in the past did indeed go to a special permit rather than a variance, then that's fine. I'm just, um, I was a little surprised to see this come in as a special permit, that's all. But that's just, if we wanna just dwell on the, uh, on the ignoring that whole question, which might be the best way of moving forward, cause it's, um, why don't we just focus on whether or not this project, we feel it should be endorsed or not?
Right.
So, um, any, um, any comments or questions? Um, we do have, um, one of the people here with us this evening, I believe. Uh, Ms. Greiner is here. Cynthia Greiner is one of the petitioners. Um, and if there are any questions the board has, or does someone just simply want to make a move? Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a, we do have this.
It is just, it should just be important to note that, um, uh, uh, engineering has reviewed this and has, um, uh, ruled that is not small, uh, small, small development, it is not sugarstorm water.
Okay, well, since we have Matt here, um, I should, Matt, do you wanna, do you wanna say anything more than what Taylor just said? I apologize.
No, uh, no, we, we don't really have any other comments. It's, you know, it, it was well underneath the threshold for stormwater management, which is five hundred square feet. It's a pretty minor addition, sixty, about sixty-five square feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, so any, uh, comments or concerns from the board or is there a motion to move one way or the other?
Um, I, I'm just, the basis of whether or not it's, it's more detrimental or less detrimental to the neighborhood, I would just, I'd, I'd say it's fairly neutral. Um, I, it, the addition seems to, um, happen at an elevational change. So a pedestrian might come down on this Lincoln Street elevation and not really even notice because it's so far above it. And it seems like it's not, uh, rendered here, but that there will be new planting, seem, seemingly trees, two or three along this elevation, so that one might not see that new addition afterwards. So I, I think that it's, it's not any more detrimental. I think it's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I, I agree with Yicheng. It seems fine. Yeah.
So is there a motion to recommend favorable action?
I'll make that motion.
I think that's the correct language. Recommend favorable action on petition four double oh five for one forty-nine Highland Ave. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, roll call vote, please. Carrie?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Greiner, for showing up this evening. Good luck at the ZBA. We're a we're actually ahead of schedule. How is this possible? Um, so, uh, our next thing is the, um, street tree committee warrant article. Carrie, do you wanna lead us through this? I think we have the text of it somewhere.
I, I noticed, uh, before we move on, uh, Taylor, I, I really like the appearance of our new planning board logo on the top of the sheet here that's, that's being on the upper right-hand corner.
I think it looks really good. I mean, it was, I, I, I appreciate you seemingly giving me credit for it. I didn't do anything, but I, I just put the, I just put the thing on, on, on paper, but yeah, I think it looks really good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we can credit the board with working well with a good designer, Reagan McCain, who presented us with some very viable, many viable options and listened very attentively to our recommendations and the outcome is good. That's what I think. So thank you to everybody.
Yeah, um, Taylor, just on the schedule, do we have Lauren Court with us this evening or they have solved their issues?
Uh, Lauren Court has resolved their issues, but we will, um, I do wanna update the board on what the issues were.
Okay, great. So Carrie, it's all yours.
Yeah, so the, um, the permanent street tree committee has, um, you know, been busy and we, uh, uh, there's some language that's being presented to town meeting. So the, the deadline for submission was last week. So we, um, we are looking today to vote on whether we endorse, um, endorse the article rather than, uh, sort of work with the language. Essentially, this is just an update. The, um, current bylaw had different members listed, um, and the, the appointments were a bit different. So the, the, um, language that you see before you is really just updating who will be, um, members. For example, there wasn't a sustainability director when the original, um, bylaw was written. Um, the town forest committee has changed a bit. So this clarifies, uh, that we'll have the permanent street tree committee, um, and what the membership will be. Um, it changes, uh, some language around who's voting. It used to say that there would be five members. Now it clarifies that it's five voting members. Um, and that that is the the, the membership that'll decide the quorum. And it lists, you know, sort of who's, I mean, sort of self-explanatory if you've read through it, but it's sort of, you know, designates who's gonna be part of the commission. Um, they had gone back and forth on whether or not it would meet monthly. Shall meet monthly with addition or deferral of meetings determined by a majority vote. So it sort of, um, kind of breathes a little bit of life into it and defines the membership and the parameters of the permanent street tree committee. I'm happy to take any questions.
Um, Carrie, what does the phrase, who inclusively are cor- quorum determining mean?
So it means that those voting members are, so the, the, the quorum is determined as, um, what, uh, what is it? Like three out of five have to be there to determine quorum, where there'll be other members of the board. It's the voting members that will decide the quorum.
I see what you're saying. Right, right. Thank you.
So, um, I don't, so originally I don't, climate action advisory committee wasn't in existence at the time.
Right.
And I think, were there two at-large members previously and one of them's been replaced?
Yes, there was planning board, there was town forest committee, uh, let's see, as well as the town's tree wardens appointed by the select board. Uh, let's see, it, yeah, there, the new, I think the newest, I think the, um, the new defined membership, based on the fact that they're entirely new, either committees or positions, is climate action and sustainability. Um.
Right, but did we used to have two at-large members or just one?
Uh, there used to be two members. The original language was actually just kind of squishy. Let's see. Uh, town shall have a permanent street tree committee consisting of five members, representatives from CONCOM, design review, planning board, town forest committee, as well as the tree warden as appointed by the select board. Uh, first appointment, two members serve one year, two members serve two year, one member serves three year, all members up for renewal serve a three year. And the committee is by the town planner and the Tree City USA liaison. So there's, there's quite a bit of, um,
Okay, so the, the.
Defined membership.
So the town forest person was who I was thinking was the at-large, but it looks like you've, so you've added a specific at-large person.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is, is, is that tree warden a volunteer? No?
They are.
Town employee. Yeah, they're, they're an employee. They're a member of the, and so therefore not.
And I believe the select board appoints the head of the DPW to serve as the tree warden. Is that correct?
That sounds right.
Yeah, they, they designate, it's been designated to Jim Shadock for quite a while.
Oh, so he's not the head of the DPW, but, or is he now?
I, 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 I don't recall the name of the head of the DPW, which I'm ashamed to say. But I, I don't know if Jim is still the tree warden, but in the past, under Jake Isle, he was. He was the deputy tree warden.
Okay.
But he was, he, he, he pretty much did the tree warden stuff.
And, and Carrie, just to confirm for the record, the town forest committee, the town forest has been moved by vote, um, to be under the jurisdiction of the conservation committee, commission, excuse me. And the town forest committee doesn't exist anymore. Is that correct, Carrie?
That is correct. And I, yes, the town forest is, is under the conservation commission now, right? Right.
Great. So that's part of the reason for the change. That's great.
Yeah.
Well, so i- is the question before us that we would endorse the statement in front of us at town meeting?
I, I think, I think because it's been submitted and there's no opportunity to. I, I think, I think because it's been submitted and there's no opportunity to change language, our vote would be to endorse, to take no action or to not endorse.
Yes.
Well, I move to endorse, um, but I, I don't know if there's further discussion that's needed.
Well, are there comments from the rest of the board?
If you're curious what they're up to, um, you know, we, we had sort of a philosophical discussion about how this will interact with the planning board. If I can just sort of like nudge us towards endorsement, and essentially we're.
You'll have a really, you don't have to nudge us much, Carrie.
I know, but it's also, we're way ahead of schedule, so it might be a nice time to give you a brief update.
Sure.
Uh, so one of the things that we're looking at is sort of starting to act more actively and proactively inventory the trees in town. And anticipate where we could augment them, and I, as, as your permanent street tree committee liaison. I'm trying to use the opportunity of development areas, so North Main and three A as an opportunity to focus that inventory. So that we can sort of dovetail those two interests, that's about it.
Great.
Yeah, that would be great, I can certainly tell you that. One of the things that, back before it was, when it was just the trees working group. One of the things we looked at is the, the tree deserts in town. And as you can imagine, some of the older working-class neighborhoods are definitely lacking in street trees. And, and their streets don't really avail themselves of putting in street trees unless you put in bump outs, just because of the way. But they also, um, there's a really great website, which you, looks at heat islands. And it certainly says that those areas are much hotter than the rest of town.
Oh, yeah.
I could remember whether you were always with that, but that would be, that would be great, um.
I, I was playing around with, uh, um, GIS today. So the, um, where you can find all this sense of date, census data and state and national data on our town. And I, I didn't know this, but we have a whole, um, designated section as, uh, environmental justice section. That is very, very prominent and in GBD three. And then swatting and up towards Woburn, and it's a hu- humongous swath. And I don't know what that entails, whether or not, when it's designated, uh, environmental justice. Section, do we then, can, can we access more funding from some kind of state thing or national thing? To get more resources for those areas.
That's a good question.
Um, and I think what designates them is if there are, uh, more people of color in there, if the social economic, um, if the, if the. Economic and income, um, data is lower than a, a certain degree of things. And then I can't remember what the other criteria are, but it seems like it's a, it's, you know, huge swath.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Eeching, because I do think that, and Carrie, this is a planning board comment, perhaps, that you can take back. To the permanent street tree committee, um, is that not only should we balance the addition of new trees. Across the town with special attention to the places where they have historically been missing. But I'd also like the, um, permanent street tree committee to, um, come up with and, um. Guess I could use the word impose, uh, standards of tree installation. That would go a long way towards ensuring their survival. I know, growing up, that my dad always used to say, you know, dig a hundred dollar hole for a ten dollar tree. Um, and it's his way of saying that a tree of any size deserves a hole much bigger than you would ever imagine. And when you get to street tree plantings, of course, there's huge constraints because of sidewalks and curbs and underground abilities. Um, and I think in some towns, permanent street tree committees are permitted with owner's approval. To put town trees in the very front portions of private land, and it's one of the strategies for assuring the survival of street trees. I don't know how they handle that in terms of deeds and things, but all those kinds of things are so important. And I really applaud the permanent street tree committee for reconstituting and reviving a commitment. To the, the, um, the re-greening, I guess I should say.
Right.
The, a re-greening of Winchester, so thank you for serving on that, um, as a liaison.
Happy to. And I'm sure there will be more bylaws to come, because I know David's always been interested in the Lexington sort of allows the town to be involved. In a certain number of feet around the perimeter of our property, and I'm, I know that is on his mind, so.
It's thirty feet off the front, I believe, it's quite a big chunk.
Right.
Yeah, that was.
We'll get there, but some number for, you know, some exchange, you know, I, I think that's, I think it's helpful to keep in mind. Especially for areas that we're looking at, you know.
So one of, one of the things that we shouldn't forget is that, uh, during the trees working group era, which was a couple of years back. Uh, we had a, uh, uh, our, we had a, a youth rep from the high school. Who did a survey of, um, tree bylaws from all of our neighboring towns, and he put together this dynamite document.
Oh, great.
Taylor, that has to be somewhere in the disk space that you got from Brian, or we can have Brian. We were supposed to slap a cover, not slap a cover, we're supposed to wrap it in a cover and an intro and publish that. And I don't recall that we ever got that far.
Taylor, I think I have a copy of it.
Yeah, it was.
Sure, send, send it over, I, I, I only have two point one terabytes of data to go through, it's somewhere in there, so feel free to just send it over.
Yeah, um, so that, that one was a lot of work, and, uh, it was a, it was an eye-opener in terms of what other towns are doing. So, um, so we are, um, still ten minutes shy of this segment, but, um, I don't think we can, uh. I, I think at this point, if there.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No, there's nothing wrong with that, um, just letting you know that, uh, we'll be starting our discussion of Loring Street subdivision early. But we do believe we have, do we have Emily coming to, to join us this evening, um, Taylor?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Um, so why don't we, um, if there's a, a motion by the board to, um, endorse this. Um, town meeting or article, or what, whatever motion.
I can, I can move to endorse the street trees warrant article.
Excellent, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please, uh, Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Eeching?
Aye.
Um, Nick?
Aye.
And I say aye as well, uh, thank you very much, um.
Great, thanks.
So we are, um, so Taylor, if you wanna move on to, um. The, the, the Loring Street subdivision.
Yes, I don't know, I must have not written a memo for this.
No, we don't have anything related to that, come find.
Okay, so the Loring, the Loring Street subdivision was approved by the board on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It was approved on the condition that, uh, electricity and communications were to be delivered underground. To the three, uh, the, the three, uh, lots. Go ahead, Dan.
Are you sure it was twenty twenty-three?
Uh, I mean, now that you said that, makes me not sure, but.
Cause I, I don't recall that this board voted on it.
Okay, could have been twenty twenty-two then.
And, and I believe it's L- Loring Ave, right, not Loring Street?
Well, there's a court, Loring Court. And then.
Court.
The court is the, is the property where the Mahone, no, not Mahone, it's the Budakian rug cleaning plant was removed. And there, wasn't there a, a, an A and R or subdivision made there?
There was a subdivision there, but I think it was prior to most of the people on this board being on it.
I don't remember this at all.
Yeah, I think Maureen may still have been on the board at that time.
I think.
It is, it is Loring Court.
Yeah, it's Loring Court, comes off of Loring Ave. It's a little, it's a spur, or it's a, as we call it, a, um, dead-end road, not a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Right here.
But anyway, other than, other than the date, please go ahead.
Uh, the, um, the people responsible for the building had requested. That they be seen in front of the board again, because they were, they've been unable to obtain a transformer. That would allow them to deliver the power underground, so since the original, uh, decision was based on. A, uh, below ground transmission, and they were gonna have to request above ground, they wanted to come back to the board. They have since rescinded their, their desire to come to the board, because they have found a solution. Um, but I found it important to leave on the agenda, one, because they let us know after the agenda was complete, and two. Uh, because this does appear to be an issue that is, um, well documented, uh, by EverSource. And could potentially, uh, we could potentially have the same problem with projects moving forward. So I wanted to let the board know that seems to be underground transformers seem to be in very short supply. Um, and could delay projects, uh, for up to two to three years.
Yeah, I did, I did a very cursory research on this question, and it appears to be quite a serious problem that we should all be aware of.
Is that the kind of system that many of these projects have come before us before, like water field or, or ten combers, are they looking at underground?
Those will be commercial transformers, so they'll be much larger and in different, at, at a different scale. I'm sure that they're still in short supply, uh, but these are much smaller residential scale.
So that comprises an update. Right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, so Loring Court was, um. I see email from. Last May, talking about a tripartite agreement. So I would assume that the board, this was something that came last year. So I was wrong about. The date and where the Maureen was on there, but.
Yeah, no, I think I was on the planning board when this came before us, but it was very early in my time on the board. Eeching, that would mean you might remember it too?
Um, I don't remember, Loring Court.
No, that's okay, that's okay, maybe I was just, uh, um, it was a meeting that I might have sat in on or something.
Yeah, so I see email back even from twenty twenty about Loring Court. Um, and it's something, I don't know what is it, something from one of the lawyers. I know that they came, they appeared before the planning board, that's in order to get our support to change the zoning from, um. I believe it was IL.
Yep.
Residential.
Right.
Then, then they came a gorgeous again to do the, uh, the subdivision, so. In any case, um, I think, I think your, your point about the inability of getting the transformers is important. Um, I, I wonder what's gonna happen up at Rocky Ledge. I don't recall at Rocky Ledge whether we put in a condition that the transmission lines be buried. Does anyone recall if we did that?
I do not.
No. I mean, I think it's probably. And that's something that we, I think we want to see in subdivisions, so maybe we should have, we should keep that in mind. Based, of course, on the economics or the feasibility of actually getting one of those things. So, um. Um, okay, um, any further on Loring Court?
Thanks.
So, um. I will, so we are moving into North Main Street, and unfortunately, we couldn't have one of our consultants with us. This evening, that's what it sounds like, so we may as well start it early. Um, Taylor, do you wanna give a brief update on where we're at?
So we have actually, uh, officially today, contract is, is completely signed. Um, from, from both, both parties, uh, still a little bit of work for purchasing order and stuff, but. Contract is signed, so, so, uh, we, we are moving forward. Sure you've all seen the, the ZRAC, um, zoning review advisory committee. Uh, invitation that went out either last week or the week before. Um, I have received zero interest from it. Uh, we are looking for five individuals, uh, no one has yet stepped up saying that they would be interested. I have received questions about it, uh, but no one has said that they want to do it. Um, we have put a deadline of this Friday evening. As the last day that people can, uh, can submit their interest. If we don't get any volunteers, uh, that. Likely be just to have to select people, uh, but, um. We'll leave that to the board to decide if that's necessary or not, Dan.
Can, can we absorb that function into our. Our meetings in the planning board if we don't get anyone to do it?
Well, this, this was supposed to be our, our citizen, our resident advisor.
Okay, okay, fine, yeah, I, I, I withdraw the, withdraw that question.
I just wanted to point out that, um, there is a posting on the town's website, which is, I think, where, where Taylor has gotten no response. We've had a posting up for about a little over a week now, so people out there in TV land who are interested, this is the. This is the residence board, which will advise the planning board and its consultants on what, what, on the town's. Inputs in response to the planning, to the, um, plans for MBTA three A. We have had, um, a couple of people who have expressed, there was one person who's expressed interest in, in being on there. And I think they may not have understood, or they may not have been notified that it's actually, they have to go through the website in order to apply. So we're gonna be reaching out to them, um, but, uh, we, we desperately need interested peoples from the community. To, um, go to the town's website, go to the volunteer posting positions, and you can fill out, um, a brief form there. And that will get to Taylor.
Um, I had a question on whether or not, um, they needed to be registered voters, and apparently they don't. Um, and I, my other question follow-up for that would be whether or not they need to be a cer- a certain age too. Cause I, I know that there are lots of, um, high schoolers who are interested in urban planning, um. And this kind of long-term planning is, would be relevant to them, and, um.
I think that, um, we welcome everyone. Um, I think that, um, so.
Right.
Yeah, some, something to also keep in mind is that this will coincide with two. At, just to in the, uh, in, in this, this upcoming quarter, so until the end of the year, two public meetings. Which, um, actually, I don't think anyone knows about this yet, but will be held at the Jenk Center. And, uh, will we have the opportunity if, if we, um, if, if we want to? That will, it'll be fully staffed with, um, with coffee and drinks and, I don't know about food, but, um. It will be a nice little community event for people to come to, so that's open to the whole town, to, to, to anyone who wants to come. Um, this particular one, I think, I, we, I'd encourage other, in, I'd encourage people, even high schoolers. To, to, to express interest. Um, and Nick, to address your, your point, cause I know that it's, it's a burning one.
That was more about the working group, uh.
Yeah, we, we.
But I wanna have a, either, either have it absorbed into the board or get an invitation to those meetings, especially when the consultants are there.
Yeah, we do have also, and we, we are also considering an opportunity to, how are we gonna get? Um, the crucial opinion from other, other board members, other committee members, other staff members. Which could, which would potentially or likely be over the five people who are looking for, 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 for the ZRAC. Uh, those haven't necess- those haven't been scheduled yet, um, but it is something that, that we. That we are planning on, on doing.
You know, so there's, the, the ZRAC has its own independent meetings, we were hoping to start those in early October. And this would be one where the, I mean, everyone's, this, these will be open meetings, so everyone would be invited. And they would also be staffed by our consultant who would help guide the conversation. Um, we would, of course, have.
Is that, is that more in place or the other consultant?
Uh, it's whichever one of them has, there, there is going to be since.
Alternating.
They're alternating, because we're gonna be looking both at North Main Street and at the CBD and the three A, this is sort of their combined. They're alternating because we're gonna be looking both at North Main Street and at the CBD and the three A. This is sort of a combined proposal. So the idea would, we would alternate um depending upon the subject matter at hand. Um, we would also have the the consultants would certainly be coming before this board. Um, and you know, the key thing is to get the public input. Um, so that we can come back and to start talking about the final shape of things. Um, so that those the those um the dates, I don't believe have yet been set. But if you look at the proposal from um in this design informant place, you'll see the structure in terms of their. Interaction with the board and with the community there. So um.
I can I.
Do we know, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one thing, which is that in terms of the geography of our town, the voting precincts one, two, three and eight. Overlap with the geographic portions of our town that. These zoning efforts are addressing and um any town meeting members who reside in those precincts. Um and any residents who reside in those precincts. Um either of whom have an interest in having a say about the future, and I would assume that means many people. Um would be well served to look at this posting and ask Taylor questions and volunteer to serve. Cuz there's lots on the table and the success of this whole project depends on meeting the needs of every constituency.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we make sure that um we we send out? I'll work with you on this, Taylor, to get a list of the town meeting members that we can send an email blast to. I know we discussed um putting it into the town manager's newsletter.
Good.
We need to extend the deadline by a week, just if we get no one.
Right, the only problem is that the first meeting is scheduled for next week, but. If we have to move it, then we have to.
No one shows up, then it's a short meeting, yeah. Um, we have, you know, we we have heard interest from some people, but who haven't come in through the. This process, we need to drive to direct them to this process, but why don't we do a blast? I'll work with you tomorrow. We'll do a blast of town meeting members. Uh, I know we have a a loyal audience out in TV land and I I ask that you consider serving on this. It's pretty light duty. Um, it's a few meetings uh over the course of the next couple of months. Um, no, I'm sorry, it's gonna meet every three weeks from October twenty three to April twenty four. Wow, okay, so it's still light. But maybe a little longer.
Um, maybe that, maybe that's the owner's statement that kept people away. I don't, I don't honestly know. I mean, the key statement here is make recommend, it's number six, there make recommendations. That advance the planning goals for these districts and reflect the needs and priorities of the stakeholders. And the reference documents or the master plan and um uh and. And the, well, and the and the compliance guidelines for multifamily zoning.
Yeah, and just just to say that the stakeholders for the CBD are 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 wider in the sense that they. People in town do feel like they have a a stake and all people across town feel they have a stake in the CBD, so we should. In in join them to join us. I use that word too many times. Um, but yeah. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Sally.
No, it's just a great opportunity for people who have thoughts on the matter. To um get those thoughts into the mix as. Um, we frame proposals and decisions are presented or or proposals are presented.
I I think, I don't know that we can say more about the Z RAC on tonight's um at tonight's meeting other than to exhort. People to 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 please, if if you can't figure out where on the website this volunteer is, please email planning board. At Winchester dot U S, we'll make sure that we get a pointer to it.
I I can tell you now to look on the top bar for where there's a thing that says, how do I dot, dot, dot? And you scroll down to volunteer.
No, sounds easier. Um, so I think Taylor, you've summed up pretty much where we're at. We're looking at a couple of public meetings. I think the there's been a little bit of back and forth on some minutiae of the contract, so things haven't really gotten. Cracking as quickly as we'd hoped, but we're still, I think, on track to having a couple of public meetings over the next two months, two or three. I forgot the exact number. And those will be, as Taylor pointed out, uh into Jenks will have. We will have refreshments. There will be food. We will bring candy at the very least. Um, so Jolly Rogers are always used useful to get people to come in, um but we're going to have uh fora and we're going to have. Uh questions from the audience and we will have people who can answer them. Um, the historical commission has asked us to have a joint meeting with them to discuss how three A. Impact historic structures and I think we're going to have to get our joint meeting on our second meeting in October is the earliest. Because we have um our next meeting. I'm sorry, the tenth will be full of water field. There was something else, um. Right, uh there there's, we've gotten a half hour slot in front of the select board at a meeting in mid October. I've forgotten which date it was, where we will be doing a presentation about three A to the select board. Um, in terms of your questions earlier on, Nick, uh so. There are, in terms of getting the properties that you and Carrie into the map, uh that will happen. Do not worry, that will go in, um I don't.
Yeah, it it'll happen, you know, not at the last minute. I I just wanna make sure.
It will, it will not happen at the last minute. I think we're just. Um, the resources that the planning board has at this particular moment to do that are limited. But that doesn't mean it's been forgotten.
Okay, great.
It will go in there. Do have no fear and it won't go in at the last minute. Um, because that would not be appropriate, um because it go through public um discussion.
Right, right.
Um, the other question you had was interactions with the consultants.
Yeah, the sub, I guess, the working groups, I I would hope, I I know that. I guess we had talked about the fact that we can't do it all during our regular meetings. We don't have the time. Which which I wish we did, but if we don't. Maybe um the board members could at least have an invitation to the working group meetings, especially when the consultants are there.
So.
They just sort of get a filtered.
So by working group, currently, we just have the Z RAC.
Okay, cuz I thought there was an invitation uh that came across. That was advertising for a working group to work on three A, uh which I may have misread or.
I think there was, we had prior to bringing in this and. On Form and Place, since it was new contract, we had discussed a working group. And I don't know if that's the one, and that has essentially is what they're terming the Z RAC.
Oh, the Z RAC, okay, alright.
So the the Z RAC, I mean, I should point out that there the Z RAC will be sort of this top level body that we talk to. But in terms of, for instance, if we, if there is a group of people who really wanted to work on design. Guidelines and such like that, I mean, that could be a subgroup of the Z RAC or something like that, so. You know, the the.
And we we know about that, Taylor, would kinda keep us up to date on when these different things are happening and.
Yes, yes, nothing is happening. I mean, there is a um. The Taylor is coordinating with um Form and Place and Innis and I step in in my role as chair, but none of that is policy. That's just.
Logistics?
Logistics, I was gonna say bureaucracy, but I think logistics is a better term for it. Um, but all policy will be um made by this board. And I believe that as soon as, I was hoping that we would get someone from those two groups to be here this evening. I guess it was too early. We couldn't schedule it, but um.
Which two groups, I'm sorry?
Uh, our two consultants, I'm sorry.
The consultants, I see Innis and Form and Place.
Yeah, so you know, unfortunately, we are not moving very quickly on this for reasons I think you're all aware of. It's just been taking a while.
So there isn't a working group. We're gonna have, I guess, the the only working group is the Z RAC and and.
Yes, that's correct, that's. It's just following what their suggestions were. If you look at their at their proposal for the for their contract, that's what's in it.
Right, sure. Well, thank you uh for for addressing those concerns.
Sally, your handles up.
Well, so my my only question was um that um. If the entire planning board is sitting in on meetings with a consultant, it becomes a quorum. And that becomes a planning board meeting that we have meeting posting requirements of, I I forget, is it forty two hours or forty eight?
We should maybe consider, you know, having the forty two hours. I I know that when we.
Whatever it is. But the other thing is that when I just in the time that I've been on the planning board, like each thing and I have, um for example. Spun off, made a two person group to take on a task and come back to the board with the results. And DAB said something very helpful just a few minutes ago, having to do with if if a if a portion of the board wants to. Begin the process of of recommending the core elements of design guidelines or whatever. I'm I'm sure that such an effort would be helpful to speeding up the process, um. Uh, DAB, is there any reason why perhaps Nick and one other member of the board couldn't?
I don't think there's, you know, the key is that.
I'm not looking to do that necessarily. I mean, I think I think we just wanna make sure that that the board as a whole, I I know that during the master plan. Process, there wasn't a working group, all the board members, it was a big group. And it was advertised with the forty eight hours. And I think to the extent possible, uh since this is such an important issue, we we ought to have as many of the board members be invited to that. Those those groups, I mean, as possible, and and if if we need to advertise the forty eight hours.
So.
Try to do it.
Right, so the Z RAC will be a posted public meeting. So it will follow all all of the posting requirements. If sufficient board members show up and wish to participate. Then I think we would consider that as a joint meeting. I think there is a rule by, you know, if you just sit in the audience and don't say anything, I don't think it counts.
Are are we also a member of the community in that capacity or or?
I think it all depends upon what is the, what's the reason for your being there? If you were there to engage as a member of the board at the table, then that.
Right, which which may be, it may be the case. I mean, it depends.
Yeah, I I think there's a, there's, I think it's, we have to be very careful in trying to separate our positions as. I mean, I don't think that people, if people see you at the meeting and know that you're a board member, they're gonna think that you're acting in your own, in your capacity.
That's fine. I mean, I think I think we should do the advertising to the extent possible. I mean, obviously, it's not possible we can't, but.
The Z RAC meetings, as I said, will be posted. And they will follow all the open meeting guidelines because that's what we've signed up for, so I don't think there's a concern there. If this board wants to have additional meetings with the consultants separate from at our normal meetings. Then that would just follow our standard guidelines for crew for, you know. For uh announcing, which is actually seventy two hours because the town clerk would like to have an extra day in case there. They have a rush at the in the clerk's office. I don't.
Yeah, if.
Yeah.
If I, let's just say, and this is for for the record, this is, you know, me trying to understand as a new, as a new member here. Um. If I, if I hold an information session to the public and all board members join. Um, and some of the his- some historical join and some housing partnership join. But it's the intent of it is is an information sent, uh is an information session. And people still ask questions and have a conversation, but we're not necessarily acting as a board. We're just having a discussion as interested people, interested citizens. Is that something that we could do?
Well, so we would be, we would certainly be posting that ahead of time anyway.
Of of course, but just from the from from, you know, that.
Right, so the question as to whether that would constitute an actual legal meeting of this board. Um, at this time of night, with the state of my neurons, I'm going to say that's something we can easily ask the town clerk to to give us her her opinion on. And to make sure it's clean. I just, you know. I'm very conservative when it comes to whether or not we are crossing that line. I I just could be that I'm being overly conservative and that all of these things are quite possible. Um, I just, you know, but yeah, we can look into that. I do, again, I think the key question is if there's policy being discussed.
Yeah.
Then I think there's a point where, once you start talking about policy. That the board might undertake, then I think we're moving into the realm where it might actually have to be declared an actual meeting if we have a quorum. Um, I I think we've always said that we could have, well, we haven't always said, but I think if we have working groups which. Put together suggestions for the board with the understanding that the entire board would be discussing the policy. And that the working groups would not be doing sort of a. Preemptive narrowing of um possibilities. That that would fall, that would not require, that wouldn't be seen as a. A violation of open meeting law, so. Um, we've we've kind of used that when we when we've had two people, members of the ADU working group and et cetera. To um.
But we we don't currently have any of that planned at the moment.
We don't, but again, I mean, one of the things that I think we've all recognized is that the design guidelines are a really important part of this process. And I would love to see us starting work somehow. On what design guidelines might be, so we do have, you know, we have one of our, one of our consultants. Uh and we have two great consultants who know a lot about design. And I think engaging with them earlier rather than later about what it is that's in our town's design guidelines. Which are acceptable and which have to be tweaked. I think that's a really important thing we could start the ball rolling on, so.
Right, for for everyone, everyone should be involved in that meeting uh on the board, I would, I would think.
I I don't know that everyone needs to be involved. I think that.
No, I think they should. No, no, because then we're getting it filtered down from from DAB and Sally and then we have to say, well, what what is? Yeah, but what is?
I do not want to be part of that. Okay, when I say a subset of people, that does not include me. I completely understand how people dislike my design criteria and which way I would go. So I am not gonna be part of that group.
Yeah, and Nick, I I was, I was thinking in my mind that um maybe you and I could comprise. A working group that would um come back to the planning board with. Recommendations on what the desired guys have to accomplish, what's the, what what their goals um and objectives are. And then what is best practice in terms of how design guidelines are incorporated into zoning. Um, and um you are one of the people on the board who has very strong. Feeling about the importance of design guidelines, so I thought it would be great to include you, and if it's not me, it could be with Carrie and or I Ching.
No, I I would be open to that that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's what's a useful thing to think about is looking, redlining our current design guidelines. And determining what part of them are not, would need to be changed. And that's not a policy decision, that's a discussion with consultants who say, these are the ones that are problematic. So if you go over that with them and come back to the board and say, this is, you know, that. Offloads a lot of time that the board would have to go through poring over them, so. There's, you know, I I I need to push back just a bit on the thought that Sally and I are trying to constrain the amount of information going to the board.
It, I'm just saying that sometimes it feels that way. It feels that that there are certain members of the board that dominate and. Whether it's true or not, uh I I do get that feeling on occasion.
Well, I I apologize. If I if I if I come across that way, then that, then I apologize. It's a failure of mine to communicate well.
Well, and and Nick.
I do wanna assure you that. The, there has been, there has been very, almost no discussion with the consultants about directions. As to which way the board wants to go or anything like that. The only discussions so far have been about logistics and setting things up so that we can move forward at there. I do not want to be in the midst of all of this. I have spent so much time over this past year that, to be honest, if I spent. You know, a quarter of the time I do on the planning board as I do now, I would be really happy, so the more work that the rest of this board is willing to undertake. In terms of moving three A forward, you have my blessing. I do not feel the need to be part of every discussion on this. Especially in areas where I know that my views are 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 not appreciated, so. and I don't mean that in a mean way. I just know that I do not want my views to bias the outcome. So, um, so I'm more than happy to leave that discussion to other members of the board.
And I, and Nick, I want to add that um, in the hiatus when after Brian Zakali left and we were so lucky as to have Taylor start in the, in his new role. There was this period of time where a whole chunk of planning board work would have gone undone. If DAB and actually I, just stepping forward in my role as a vice chair, hadn't um, done a whole bunch of work. Um, and I think that if, if you or anybody on the board perceived that as um, being, I don't know, just uh, non-communicative or too top down in what's supposed to be a very collaborative committee or board, um, that would not be the intent. Um, my intent right now is very much what yours is, which is to, let's move forward with clarity on what we want, the new zoning for uh, G B D three, the new zoning for G B D two, and the new zoning for the multifamily overlay districts um, with the design guidelines in those three sets of new zoning um, would be based on in terms of their goals and objectives and how they would be worded and how they would be, yeah, and how they would be worded. And it's, it's not a small question. It's a big question and we'd, I mean, personally, I'd love it if like, for instance, eating coming into the process with all of her experience in architecture and the language of describing architecture. Um, and then you, Nick, with your um, wonderful focus on historic, not just historic preservation.
I can appreciate all that. Absolutely.
So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm highly sanctioning you, what you're saying um, and encouraging.
I can appreciate your position and, and where you're coming from. Uh, absolutely.
I, I want to say just a huge thank you for the Herculean tasks that you and DAB have took on um, for the last six, eight months. And, you know, it's really appreciated and it was stuff that I knew that you guys needed help on. I just could not come to grips with um, it and, and come in and help. And I, I, I do apologize, but I, I think, I thank you so much. And, you know, we, we are where we are um, because of you guys, because we, we aren't way backwards because, because you guys put in the hard work and I, I really just want to thank you publicly.
I would, I would echo that as well.
Oh, I appreciate that.
And as do I. Thank you.
I mean, I don't, I don't mean either. I mean, there's a limit to how much each of us can do, and I think each of us does, goes up to that limit. So I'm not, I, I just, there is a lot of work to be done. And so, um, go ahead. I just, I would love for people to figure out what niche they feel comfortable in putting in the effort to move this forward. I know that it's, that's, that's what I'm really looking for. Each of us has our own particular interests and are very passionate about them. And, and I would love to see that them, you know, pick up something and, and run with it.
Um, I did do some homework on it and I, I, I would love to show you guys some of the mapping work I, I did because I really wanted to understand what was going on. Um, and I don't know if we, we do have a little bit of time. I don't want to take too much time, but if I could show you, I, I know, I didn't tell anybody this.
As long as this related to three A.
It, it, it does. Um, if I could share my screen.
Half an hour.
I'd love, I'd love to see it eating.
Can you see that?
No. Yes.
Okay. So, so my mapping, I really am so angry at our zoning map. I, I had Suzanne print it out so that I could see it bigger. But whenever I load it up on my computer, it takes forever to move around and to see it. So I just wanted a clear one. I had Brian Mantor help me get a, a just CAD map of this. And so this is, um, can you see that?
Yes, this is great.
Talking about. Awesome. So this is just the butterfly with the streets and I wanted to just see it, how much developed land we have. So we have six point three square miles, right? And we're not making anymore. This is almost a geometric problem um, that we have here. Um, I, I layered on some of the stuff that we have in our districts, right? So the conservancy institutional district, all the green spaces, all the institutional spaces for schools and town buildings, et cetera. So this is the Fells. Um, this is, this is the country club privately owned and this, you know, all is owned by M B T A. We are leasing Gin Field and this is, you know, um, the, the Mystic Place, et cetera. So these, we cannot build on, right? Um, Plan Residential District, the ledges, and then that, that strip there um, from decades ago. It's decided that, um, you know, they could do density on it. So I was trying to map out how much single family housing we have. So this was a subtraction. Like if we took out all the land that you could build non-single family stuff on, this would be, this would be the map, right? So keep going light and light limited industrial, limited light industrial, tiny little spot. All the G B D, if you blink, it, it, it disappears, but it's, it's that, right? We have that much business stuff. Um, G B D one, which is on the outskirts, these pink spots, Swanton, and then the, the, the um, car dealership. Of course, C B D, G B D two, G B D three, right? Tiny little strips that we had to deal with to get our commercial base. And then the general residential district, six point five. And what I understand is that six point five, you're allowed to build duplexes on only if you have duplexes on it already. Um, if not, you had needed a special permit.
Um, just one correction on that. You can build a duplex if you have eleven thousand square feet.
Oh, so more than sixty five hundred square feet.
If you, you need a minimum of eleven thousand to build a duplex. And is there?
In, in the six point five zone.
Yes, yes.
In other words, you could have, you could have a, an, a, a, a over conforming lot essentially.
You can have a single family up, you can have a sing, yeah.
You can have a humongous lot, own the whole town and build a single family.
Yeah, but you could, yeah.
Okay. Do you mean, do you mean in the whole town, build a two family? Is that what you meant to say?
No.
No, no, no.
You could, you could have an over sized lot.
Yeah.
And just build one single family if you wanted to, or two.
True. Yes.
Okay. So anyway, so the, all the color spots are places where you can build a, something other than a non-single family. All the other, all the, all the white areas are single family only. So that's seventy eight percent of our units are seventy eight percent, you know, are, are single family. So that, that was my curiosity. Of course, there's the twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size on the west side, the ten thousand here and the weird fifteen thousand here, right? So this is all just, you can only build one building on this lot.
And the sixty five hundred up um, towards Forest Street and up that way.
Yeah, and there's, there's a little one down at the, at the, the southwest part.
Here, right here, right?
Eating is, you've got this in presenter mode. Is there any way you could?
Yeah.
We're, we're seeing your next slide and your notes.
I see. Oh, my notes didn't make sense either.
Well, it's just they would make it bigger.
Yeah. Okay. So is this up better? So two, two, two um, stations and, and to answer um, Nick's earlier question from like months ago, why aren't we building around here? Right? And, and the Wedgmere lot, it's, it's because the Wedgmere half mile radius is mostly single family with a green space that's owned by M B T A, not, not by the town. Um, so whereas in the Winchester lot, half mile radius, it is mostly already zoned for things other that has a density higher than single family already, right? Is that, is that kind of the logic that we're working with?
Right. I mean, there, there is a, an area on Gin Road that was a former gin estate, um, that's kitty corner to the, to the T.
Uh huh.
And that area is all, was all fifties, you know, it has no historic buildings. And that was the, that was the area that um, you know, might have been a candidate if we needed it, but I, I don't.
One little lot here, like that, that.
I, I just.
The uh, yeah, the, 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 the space defined by Gin Road to the north and Baker Street to the south. And right in Baker Street to the south. Right. And those, those, that area is, is not historic.
Okay. But that, that would be about maybe maximum one, two acres. We're, we're looking for third, at least thirty seven acres contiguous space.
So I just want to point out that the mid fifties were seventy years ago, seven zero. And I consider.
I apologize.
And I consider mid-century modern historical. So I think we have to be, it's, it's how time flies, but yeah, it was seventy.
Right, but, but, but just speaking with people, um, I, you know, I, I'm the, you know, I'm the last one that wants to put a bunch of development near the park. Because I think, actually, my experience in New York City was that you can take the train and it'll dump you out at like some completely wild place that's not built up. And that's one of the charms of that particular station is that you just get out and it's completely, you know, you've got the park and you've got some single family historic houses. Um, but it, it did occur to me that um, yeah, I, I guess I use Gin Road because I was less concerned about those particular style, but.
But I, I think, you know, I think we can, well, hopefully we can all agree that those T station in the center of town makes much more sense. Because the amendments to our zoning are so minimal compared to what we would have to do around Wedgmere.
So here's a zoomed in part. And I try to look at what our consultants had circumscribed as the areas necessary and it's this, right? If we go back and forth, it is Parkview here in purple, um, and then G B D two parts of it, and then C B D, and then um, the entirety of the C B D, so including close to Church Street here, that, that is all circumstruck right there. As well as um, this converted condo by the lake, um, and, and the next door lot.
Yeah, and, and the strip, the two properties that are what you, I would say from this map, we're on the northwest face of the lakes, shore of the, it's, it's actually.
The Lake Street area. Right. So it's this, this.
I don't think it's a lake. Isn't it called a pond? What's that?
Wedge Pond.
It's on Lake Street. So somebody thinks.
Right, right, right. So, but you have, I think you have that light blue thing, right? Um, and, and, and just going back to the question, um, because it will probably continue to come up and it's important that we understand very early in the three A compliance prod, process, Brian Zakali and I, I don't know who else was working on this question, but the question came up, you know, within days of the three A law being passed that Winchester has two stations, which one of them would we work on to move towards our compliance? And it's the very point that DAB just made, that there was so much more um, low lifting as opposed to heavy lift, light lifting as opposed to heavy lifting. If we went with the Winchester Center T as the focus of our M B T A compliance because there's such a diversity of structures and zoning within the half mile radius as opposed to a half mile radius of the Wedgmere station, which is almost entirely all single family zoning as each excellent excellent analysis just showed. So that's the reason as far as I know why we did that.
Because what, one of my thought, oh, I like this slide, but before, one of my thoughts about, about the gin state area is that I think that I recall it now is that, that these, these mid-century houses are being demolished uh, to build McMansions. And it would be an inroad into, if we're going to demolish one of these houses, that's a moderately sized house, why can't we replace it with a structure that has more units than simply just a massive house? Um, and it would kind of get our feet wet in terms of um, thinking about our zoning a little bit differently.
That's the very question that I asked when we were talking about one of the subdivisions in town and I had said, I know it's zoned for single family, but couldn't we make it, um, instead of three single families, make it three?
The ledges. Yeah, absolutely.
And, and the answer that I understood was that it would require us to rezone, not just those lots, to apply new zoning to all the lots that were in that zoning district.
No, it would, it would only require us, the problem is it would, it would be spot zoning for a single project, which is some ways frowned upon. But we could do it, have done in overlay, but again, that would have to go through town meeting.
Right, right. So to Nick's point, it, it, it has to go through town.
I mean, it's a perennial issue that we always bring up on the board is what, we're building these mansions and we don't have density and, and what are we going to do about it?
So.
Right. And that's what the three A is working to address.
If we want, I think, I think so there's, there's, I think in a sense, those are kind of two separate issues because I think Nick has pointed out a problem which occurs across town. Wherever you have a, a, a small house on a big lot, we know it's going to get turned into a big house on a big lot. So the question is, how do we address this everywhere? If we want to get our toes wet in one district, then I think um, I don't think we can tie this to three A because of the requirement for contiguity.
Mm hmm.
And so for instance, if we wanted to attach some, if we wanted to bring some of the land near the Wedgmere station into three A, we have to make sure it's either contiguous with, with, with the Winchester center.
There's not, there's not five acres in the Gin, in the Gin Road.
Or it has to be five acres. And so.
Contiguous or five, and that's a really tricky rule.
I mean, this, if, if, if each of those lots is a fraction.
Quarter acre. They're usually a quarter.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe they're a quarter. If they're a third or, and there are fifteen of them.
Well, let's say you'd need twenty contiguous lots. I'm just throwing a number out there, Nick, but it was difficult to.
I can't count them, but yeah.
So I don't, I, I am, you know, one of my, I would love to see us figure out a way of increasing density. Not just in particular areas, because I think that there are some areas which would be more easily developed than others, but to find a way to equitably place this additional density. So I, I very much would like to see that discussion. Um, it's going to be a really difficult one because this town has grown up with, you know, um, we have seen development that, you know, all of the west side was, was, was essentially laid out in the fifties. So we're looking at seventy years of history on what are the twenty thousand square foot lots in town.
Right.
Right.
And so there's, there's a lot of, you know, people who are really happy with the way the town looks right now and walking in and saying, hey, we need more density and it's going to be in your neighborhood. Is, is a little hard. I mean, I've seen the density in my neighborhood go up just in terms of the square footage of the homes, not the number of houses per lot. Uh, it's amazing to me that you can put in two four thousand square foot units on a eleven thousand square foot lot, but it has been done. So, um, but I think I would love to see um, us not take away from the, if we could move on, I think.
Yeah, let's move on. Let's, let's, because this is a really interesting slide.
Nick's raised a good question and perhaps we can frame the discussion in a future meeting um, by having a conversation outside the meeting about what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right.
So this slide um, shows the um, the abundance that we have. So the capacity of the model is three hundred units more. Um, but if you look at this, right, you, you, you'll see that the capacity here, we're recovering, say, things like Parkview that will probably not change for another hundred years or, or this, right? This, this part already sort of developed areas. But um, that is going to consistently stay the density that it is. Um, but the capacity is this number just because of the land area.
Well, it gives us some flexibility, you know, when we start modifying that, which is nice. I'm, I think once we get, oh, go ahead. Yeah. No, I mean, I think.
And I think that this, this accomplished a lot of the, the percent of district that needs to be located within half a mile, right? It's two hundred thirty six because we needed whatever it was, eighteen, nineteen square feet or nineteen acres within the fifty percent. But more than, much more than that is within that half, uh, half, half mile radius.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think as we get closer to town meeting and we start modifying the maps, I, I think as, I, 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 I would think that we would not want to be higher than the requirements.
So I just want to point out that it's really difficult to, we can't simply, so for instance, if you want to reduce the amount of area, you have to make sure that for instance, if you were to take out ten acres to get us to the thirty seven, you would remove.
You're going to have one limiting factor. So it might be the twelve twenty that's the limiting factor. If we, if we were to take out some of the buildings on Church Street, um, that might.
If you were to.
I, I guess my concern is that we'll have room to take out some of the historic buildings and will be. I I guess my concern is that we'll have room to take out some of the historic buildings, and we'll be still within our
We can.
Mandate.
So the key thing is that some of the area, if you take it out, yes, there's enough room, which I think I mentioned before, there's more than enough room to mod, to to incorporate um, what you and Carrie have come up with in your, in your additions, in your.
Yeah.
But but the problem is that we don't act, have an extra ten acres, because if we take out some of those acres, we lose too many units outside of fifty percent. So it's a question of where those, so for instance, the, the Parkview is actually eight acres. Even though it only needs to be five to add, it's eight acres.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with overage on that, on that count.
So I think it's what's, we have to be, I know people will be asking, why can't we reduce exactly the number? And the answer is because we're dealing with chunks of land.
Yeah, I understand, I I appreciate.
But some of the parcels we're talking about are small, and they're on the edges of where the map delineate, you know, the.
Right, and I think, I think David said that we're.
We, you know, I think we have enough, if we wanna pull in a few properties that are key, and we can see how far we go. But I don't think we're gonna get to the point where we can say, we're gonna take fifteen hundred down to twelve hundred. Cause I just don't see.
Okay, maybe, that's fine, I mean, it's just whatever, yeah.
When you say fifteen down.
That's fair, I I I appreciate that, I mean.
It can be housing density, perhaps?
Right.
We need to get a minimum, we need to get a me, an average of fifteen acres per fifteen units per acre across the entire district.
Mm-hmm.
So that's our density, and we we are, we're at there, we can accomplish that. And we can accomplish that without increasing these, all of these numbers are done within the existing dimensions of our zoning. So that's the key thing, is we don't have to, we don't have to do anything to the existing zoning dimensions.
You mean dimensional requirements is what you mean?
Dimensional requirements, we're not looking for taller buildings than are required. And so all of these numbers are very, they don't require us to do anything really, except redefine a few of the districts. We can, we can, you know, talk about, we can add or subtract buildings as long as we have enough buffering. And I know that, for instance, Carrie, you and and Nick put in six sixty-six Main Street, which was left out. It's back in, so it gives us a little more room.
Yeah.
Those, we can work around with those smaller numbers.
Right, then there are also questions as to whether there are some contiguous lots that are right near, uh, Parkview that could also be added in. Um, uh, I don't know whether they're too far away.
They don't have.
At the, at the, uh, the rehab center has two big lots that could in theory be.
Here.
That, that, I don't know if a rehab center can be.
Oh, yeah, right there, the two green lots, uh, the two big green lots that are right next to Parkview. There's one across the street, and then one to the this.
So that's where.
Right there, right there, yeah, there's one right there.
In the nursing home is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and then there's one right to the right, that.
And that's another nursing home.
Right, which are probably already meet the requirements, I mean.
I don't know, I think there's a, there's a reason that they weren't included by the consultants.
Okay.
And so let's just, we can mark those as a possibility.
And we might not, we might not need them, but they might not be allowed to be in, but.
Right, there are different zoning code, you see, it's it's like a, like a.
It's a, but we can do an overlay, we're doing an overlay.
Right, but but what I think the consultants were looking at were just things that were obviously of one one district, right? So all of CBD is is included, so to to take out some of the Church Street, you would change sort of spot.
Or we can add those back, and then we can spare the Congregational Church, maybe.
We could, no, the underlying zoning doesn't, in a sense, matter. What matters is we can apply an overlay to that zone. So the, the, the building, when we, so we're only adding an overlay. So by removing buildings on Church Street from that overlay, doesn't change the underlying zoning, it just keeps it out of the overlay. So the question is.
But so then they they would change from a special permit to buy right, or buy right to special permit, like that, that would change.
It would retain its existing zoning.
Right, so, and but the other parts of, say, CBD, if if they were included within the the overlay would be have a buy right, so if you talk to a property owner, they would probably opt for a buy right zoning, other, rather than a special permit, right? I mean, if you talk to somebody on Church Street and to told them, Nick, we're gonna, we're gonna exclude you from this that that all your neighbors get, because we think you're special, I think you would get resistance and say.
No, we do, we do think they're special, because those, those properties are historic, and we do think they're special, so we we do wanna exclude those, and and we have a.
Right, but talk to them and explain that to them.
There's a discussion.
Well, let's, look, I, we're, we're, we're not explaining it to them right now, we're, we're just talking about what should be done.
So we're not even, I think, I think the key questions we have are, are there other lots which could be added, which would increase flexibility? Um, they would have to be contiguous to, I mean, we don't have any other five acre plus lots available, that just isn't. Um, we can't even add the new, the new, for instance, the new, um, the forty B on River Street is much smaller than five acres, we looked at that, we can't add that. If you wanna add the two lots across Swanton and next to Parkview, we could look at that, but those are, we, we can do the GIS on there, it's all in, you can look in, you can just go to the town's GIS and figure out what the square footage on those lots are, and what the density is. Whether, you know, I don't, if there, you know, that's a possibility. We have some flexibility already, right?
It sounds like we already have the ability to make the change, the the minimal changes that Carrie and I put together, I mean, to the extent that we wanna go further, um, is up to the board, I guess, I mean.
It's up to the community.
The community, right.
I mean, so, so the key is, this is an initial, the, the maps we got from the consultants are, they get us within requirements, they get us, we are compliant, and we have, we have elbow room. And so the question is, what does the community wanna do with? Completely redraw the maps, I would hope they wouldn't, considering the constraints we have. But the community is going to give us their input on where they want to use whatever extra padding we have, if they wanna use it. That's, um, I really am, you know, the map is is easy. It's the design guidelines, which I think are more concerning, because those are the ones which tell people what they can do, how they can design their buildings to meet the community criteria. But I'm gonna step back again, because again, I'm interfering with.
Yeah, I think we're.
Presentation.
Oh, I'm pretty much done.
To the end of our meeting, and I I think it was a great presentation.
But the special permit versus buy right, I think, is is what you're.
Yeah, but you can.
Where the design guidelines, well, the design review guidelines, the site review as well, right? And site review is gonna be part of that.
But but take out that five-story apartment.
Okay.
Cause I don't think we have, I mean, we're, we're at forty-five feet in most places, and I don't think you get five stories into forty-five feet. Or maybe we go up to sixty by right, if, or no, with special permit, if you have a green space and a build, you're parking underneath. But that typically is not what we're looking at in downtown, we're not zoned for that.
And and, uh, Eching, I commend you for putting at the bottom of this slide, um, the four critical topics, um, well, at least three anyway, the design guidelines, the historic preservation and inclusionary housing, um, that are essential to this town that we address, um, as an MBTA community among the hundred and fifty-four or however many there are, I'm sorry, I forget, um, that we care about these things. And I wanna say, Nick, that, um, just because the overlay district includes a historic building, um, in the overlay district that says that multifamily housing can be in this building by right, doesn't mean this building shall be destroyed in order.
No, but it adds, it adds pressure, and I I would not be comfortable.
I think that that's the point of putting special language, and the town has to approve, I mean, the state has to.
And 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 I guess the other thing is, I don't have a whole lot of faith in the design guidelines to do anything, because according to the law, they can't.
Well.
They can't.
But you have, I mean, I think people are forgetting that we have some very strong language in this, in the town, in our CBD regulations, which states that if you tear down a historical resource, the board.
Right, that's there, and that's a nice protection. But I don't, I I don't wanna add any additional pressure on those buildings.
Five-year denial of special permits, okay? That's a long time for development.
Waited longer, I mean, I I I don't.
Saying, Nick, is that if you're looking at protection of historical resources, I agree, design guideline is not where you want to go. You have to look at how you, what your preservation, what are your levers for preserving them? And if you're concerned about teardowns, then I agree, design guidelines aren't going to help you, and they will never help you. So what are the other options? So we have already in the CBD regs, this statement about five years of where the board looks with prejudice upon.
Right, I understand that, I'm, I'm not really sure where this is going, or why it has, why this conversation, where where is this going? It's, it's you taking the, it's you dominating again, and kind of, I'm not sure, what, why are, why am I listening?
Asking you where we should put the historic protections, I'm working with you, Nick, to say, I think that we have some. Do we move them into the bylaws? How do we strengthen them? I'm not trying to dominate, I'm asking you, how do we move forward on protection?
Well, the first thing to do is we make the, we we include the changes in the map. And then we talk about design guidelines.
And Nick, the changes in the map were driven by whether the building was a historic structure or not, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you for clar.
But there are other, there are other, you can't remove all of the historic buildings downtown from the map.
Yes, you can, we, we just did it, and it's fine.
You removed all eighty-some historic resources?
Uh, we, we removed the obvious ones.
You didn't.
There, there, there weren't eighty on the list.
You didn't remove the church.
No, we didn't do that, because that was too big, we, we haven't gotten there yet, but hopefully.
Can't because of continuity. I'm asking, Nick, for your assistance in coming up with historic preservation things that we can put in the bylaw, which will.
That's, that's great, and and Sally mentioned that, and I'm happy to to talk with whomever on that, right? That's a different, that's a different issue.
I think it's, well.
But I think the first. Broad stroke issues, it's just to take those few properties, redo the numbers, and see if it's okay to take those few properties out.
Right, I think it's low hanging fruit, and I don't really, I I mean, I I feel like first you say it's fine, and we can do it, now I'm getting all this pushback on it.
No, I still say it's fine, Nick, I just don't think that if what you're looking for is historic preservation, that, I think that if you're looking for something stronger than what we have now, then that's the message I would like to hear, because that's what I'm hearing from you, is I don't, you don't have faith in design guidelines or the current protections.
Well, for a lot of things, design guidelines don't aren't required to be followed.
I would love to hear a solution, and I'm offering that we have something in the design in our CBD regs, which is the basis to start thinking about a solution.
No, I think that sounds great, I think that that'll be a conversation that we'll have, and I think that sounds great.
Love for you to start leading that conversation on it. Cause I don't know what to do with it, I'm not a historical preservation dude, I don't know all the ins and outs, so.
I I imagine when we talk with the consultants, we'll be able to get a framework for where we can go and what are our tools, so I think that's probably the place to start. Then I think that'll happen, and I'm not worried that it will. And I'm, I'm, I appreciate your, um, your sensitivity to it.
I mean, I, I, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm frustrated, I'm frustrated, because I know there's this constant, this question about historic preservation keeps circling around, and it doesn't seem to go anywhere. And so what I hear is that, I hear that things are not sufficient, but I don't hear what the solutions are. And right now, I am really interested in understanding what we can do in order to make people who are, have concerns about historical preservation happy with three A, so that when we go to Springtown Meeting, we have their support.
Right, I understand.
And that's, I'm really, the reason I I appear to be, I'm worried about that, and I don't have the solution, and you are essentially our representative from that community on the board. And so I'm looking to you for some guidance on how we move forward on that.
I think a consistent, actionable ask has just been, can we see the new numbers with those properties removed?
Yeah, that's fair, that's, and and David said that's fine, so.
By right for those.
So, so the easy way to do this, Carrie, is to go to the town's webs, to the GIS, and for each of the properties that you have selected, you can calculate the square feet.
We did that, we just, can we, is that officially, is that, are we done with that? Is the map now updated to the recommendations?
No.
Well, I like, I like the idea that we have a map, and Eching did a beautiful job.
Yeah.
And maybe it's a map that we can now play with, and.
No, 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 no.
I'm not gonna be liable for that map, no way, that's for my own, that's for my own education.
I mean, we need a map, we need a map that we can take colored pencils to and start marking up.
Nick, I want to, I want you to encourage the complexity, I want to.
Fundamental model, the fundamental model has not been touched since it was delivered to us by the consultants at the end of Ju- June.
At the end of June, that's right, and you need to understand, Nick, that the complexity of the compliance model, that spreadsheet, that's like
Right, right, that's why I'm worried about it, because I don't know that I can understand.
Can it be adjusted?
You can, you.
Yes, it can be adjusted.
All right, well, we'll do it, I I have faith, I have faith that we'll do it, we'll come to the conversation.
A simple ask.
At the end of the meeting now, and.
If you wish to see how much area you have removed or added, simply take what's in the town's GIS for those lots, add them together, and subtract it from ten point four one acres, and you will have the result. So if you're concerned about how much you're removing or adding, that's a simple calculation.
I mean, I mean, ballparking it, it looks fine, I I mean, but I, but what, you know.
I don't know how else to reassure you, until we actually, if you, the simple calculation of how much area we're going to remove, that you can do on a piece of paper, it doesn't have to go into the spreadsheet, but it, we will need to update the spreadsheet with those recommendations.
I'm just saying, it would, it would be nice to see the map without them, uh, but, like, again, I, I'm, we're probably, it's, that's gonna happen, I'm, I'm, I'm having more faith that that will happen, and so I'm not.
It's, you know.
Not as worried as I was at the beginning.
If we have to pay someone to do that, to get that done, then that will be done. But at this point, if the town, if after we go through public comment period, and we get responses from other people in town who wish to change the map, then I would, I would suggest that we, we wait until we have a certain set of changes, so that we only have to pay someone to do it once or twice. But if the question is simply, how much have you changed the area, then that's a calculation that can be done very quickly, it doesn't require the spreadsheet. It just requires writing down the numbers from the lots that you've noted, and subtracting them from what we know to be the total, and that will give you an idea of how much is left over.
No, I, yeah, I agree, I think your assurance is that it wouldn't be done too late, and that it can't be done too late. I I think is, are, are, are encouraging, and I think that's kind of what I was looking to hear, and I'm encouraged, and I feel a lot better about things.
Nick, I wanna, I wanna add that your, um, your fervent interest in the whole three A compliance is really, really helpful and important to the.
Well, I'm trying to engage, uh, as I.
Sending word into the town, and behind that commitment to compliance is some element of roll up your sleeves and and figure details out. And to the extent that you're able and willing to do that, it will move it along more quickly.
That's fair.
So I encourage you to do so, that's all. I have on my clock, it's nine forty-nine PM, and I.
Yes, I think we're, we're four minutes over, I think.
So, so let us, um, I.
Wait, Carrie was gonna speak. No, I was signing off, that was not a comment.
I, 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 I think this has been a really robust conversation, and I apologize if I've taken up too much of the time. That's one of the reasons that I wish not to be chair any longer, is because I tend to occupy more space than I should. Um, so, anyone who wants to step up, you might. Um, but, uh, yeah, I. Um, so anyone who wants to step up, be my guest, um, but, uh, yeah, I apologize, um. But in any case, I I think at this point, we would welcome, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, please, thank you, uh, roll call vote, then, uh, Carrie.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Bailey.
Hi.
Eching.
Hi.
And I say I as well, uh, thank you all very much, thank you my much to our recording secretary Nancy Pocari.
Yes, yes.
Town planner Taylor Herman, our uh town engineer who's longer, who has left the meeting, I wanna say no longer with us, who has left the meeting. Uh, to WinCam as always, and to everyone out there in TV land, we will see you again in two weeks. And please sign up to be a volunteer for our Z RAC. We really appreciate that, thank you all, have a great evening.